Good evening. I'd like to welcome you to the Forsyth County Board of Education. I'm going to call it to order at this time. Today is Tuesday, February 20th at 6:00. Before we start the meeting, I'd like to make a statement in regard to the safety in our schools. I want to thank all the people that have called and offered to help and share their concerns with us as board members and as staff. At this time, with the tragedy last week, we always reevaluate what we do here in the school system. But I have to say personally, and I think all the board feels this way, we have a wonderful staff and who have been very proactive over the years every time we've had an event like this. And there's a statement that was on the website that was done by Mr. Todd Shirley, who's standing in the back room, and Jennifer Rattroll concerning what we are doing as far as safety goes. And I'm going to read part of that simply because a lot of people do listen and view our board meetings during the year. And I want the public to know, and for those that are really concerned, that we do take this seriously and have the plans in place for a very long time. So I'm going to read part of the statement that was made. Forsyth County School works to create and maintain a safe and healthy environment at our schools for all our students, staff, and visitors. We understand and share your concerns about safety relative to the school shooting in Florida. In light of yesterday's tragedy, all principals are reviewing the school's safety procedures and protocol. We have extensive school safety plans, and annually, our students and staff participate in safety drills. We create a video on lockdown alarms. And we are in daily contact with Forsyth County Sheriff's Office and have 28 school resource officers and deputies in our schools. We partner with the Sheriff's Office and other law enforcement agencies to conduct active shooter drills, the most recent occurring at West Forsyth High School, which can also be seen by video. We have security cameras in all of our schools, lockdown buttons that are connected directly to the 911 dispatch control access points, check-in procedures, and visitor screening technologies. Campus Crime Stoppers is available for all individuals who have tips on possible people that they feel present a danger to our school system. And from our superintendent here, Jeff's comments were, "Please speak with your children about the importance of communication. If they see something, they need to say something. This is so important." We work as a community to keep every one of our children safe, and we need to let them understand that all they have to do is contact Crime Stoppers or talk to someone if they feel like there's something that is different in their school system. When I look at what happened in Florida, I feel so very lucky to have the staff that we do and how seriously they take this and how they work so closely with our community leaders in the public safety sector. We have a great community, but we want all the parents to participate in our schools, to take advantage of the parenting courses that are being offered at schools like Lambert, to work with us as we try to keep our schools safe. But I do want the public to know that we are concerned and we are doing everything that we can to keep our children safe. Thank you. At this time, we'll have the invocation and pledge.
Everybody join us in a moment of silent reflection, please. Salute. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the mother for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You have a board you on agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
It's unmoved.
Second? A motion by Thomas, second by Nancy. All in favor? At this time, we'll have recognition with Dr. Cindy Maldonado Sloan.
It is my pleasure tonight to announce to you, as you've seen on the board, Mr. Ronnie McNeese as the Liberty Middle School Assistant Principal, and he is our Employee of the Month. I'd like to start, hang on Ronnie. I'd like to start by thanking Nellie Nissan of Cumming. They are here tonight if they'd like to come up and congratulate and when it's time. Ronnie, before you get to come up here, I want you to sit and listen to the nice things, some of the nice things that were said about you. We are fortunate that Ronnie came to our school from Whitfield County 17 years ago, and he has been a part of our school system in various capacities ever since and has been now at Liberty for several years as Assistant Principal. Ronnie is such an amazing Assistant Principal. He is always encouraging teachers and students. He makes you know you matter. He never complains and always encourages students and teachers. He is supportive of teachers trying new ideas in their classroom and loves coming in when he can watch students and teachers learn. He is engaged in this school and this community. He builds genuine relationships with everyone. He is the first person to recognize someone else's accomplishment. Rarely does anyone ever see Ronnie sitting down. His level of service sets an example for others and deserves to be recognized by the county. And last but not least, and to sum it up, I think this says it greatly, simply put, Mr. McNeese is an awesome man who loves liberty fully, and his work ethic is a true testament to his dedication. Help me congratulate Ronnie McNeese. And while he's getting his congratulations from the board, would those of you from the Liberty group please stand, and our family please stand so we can thank you for your support of him. I'd like to turn it over to June Tribble at the Hall Creek Elementary School Innovation Lab.
Thank you so much. I'm kind of loud, so let me know if that's too loud. First of all, I'd like to say thank you very much for allowing me and Julie Kelly, my innovative specialist, to come in and share with you some of the great things that we're doing at Hall Creek. One of the things that we wanted to implement just over a year ago was a 21st Century Media Center. Our media center was good, but we wanted it to be great. We had a vision that we could have more things in there for our students doing, creating, collaborating, and working together as a team, and a place where teachers could work and collaborate. So Mrs. Kelly has been instrumental in helping us create this vision, seeing this vision through. But before I introduce her to you, I want to give you a couple of examples about our students. I used to walk by the media center, and just as I was a kid many years ago, it was really quiet. You'd see kids reading, you wouldn't see a lot of activity. Now, when I walked by, I just smiled. It's loud, it's active, kids are really working together. For example, one day I was on my way to a meeting, I hear all this noise in there. I go in, and of course, Mrs. Kelly's busy with all of the children, but there were a group of kindergartners and first graders working together to create a life-size gingerbread house. I just sat and watched them, almost missed my entire meeting because they were collaborating and working together, and how to get the door to open and close and go inside, it was amazing. There's a fifth grade student group, a group working early one morning, and I go in just to see what they're doing, and they were drawing a blueprint of an outdoor classroom and garden because our outdoor classroom is currently too far for all kids at our school to access. This is also a student who really struggles in the classroom, and so we were quite impressed, I was. He drew a chart-sized blueprint with the help of Ms. Kelly about laying out our outdoor classroom but bringing it closer to the school. Our teachers are actually involved in what we call I Plan Meetings once a month. They actually collaborate with Mrs. Kelly on science standards, and she's going to go over some more of the details with you shortly. But I want you to know, one of the most favorite things is when I walk by and I know that kids are having opportunities every day in that classroom, working together and creating. It's loud, but they're learning through play, and that's exactly what we wanted them to do. At this time, I would like to introduce you to Julie Kelly, who is our Innovative Specialist. And I will tell you, although she was in the beginning of this, she wasn't easily convinced this was the job for her. When I offered the position to her, I still remember it, she said, "No, I don't think I can do that." I went back to her several days later, and she accepted the offer as the Innovative Specialist. And this is a person that I knew was perfect for the position because she's dedicated, she's creative, and she wants kids to really be involved in working with their passions and interests, and she puts in the time to do that. I will tell you, if a child comes into that Innovation Lab and they want to do a project that involves a hammer, nails, whatever it may be, she goes out and finds someone in the community that could help with that. So at this time, I would like to introduce Julie Kelly, and she will share some more of the details with you. Thank you.
So I'm Julie Kelly, and I'm excited to share our Innovation Lab at Hall Creek with you. So... Arrow's on the keyboard. Arrow on the keyboard, alright. There we go, thank you. In ten minutes, I gave you the who, what, where, when, and how, and most importantly, why of our I Lab. June Tribble came to Hall Creek in January of 2016 with a vision of having the 21st Century Media Center that would be a hub of activity for our school. At that time, I was happy teaching in our science lab and turned her down, which she asked me to start the project. After all, I've never heard of an Innovation Lab, Makerspace, but when she asked the second time, I accepted the challenge. Once I started researching, I came to realize I'd always been a maker. I made for my Sunshine family, Barbie's hippie cousin, and poured over the pages of my making do book. Also, I'm known at school as Martha MacGyver. Little bit of Martha Stewart, a little bit of MacGyver. So my research included attending a conference in Athens where I met Gretchen Thomas. She leads an undergraduate course on Makerspaces. I read Worlds of Making and various articles I found on the internet. To get the project started, Mrs. Tribble asked for and was granted PTA money to purchase our furniture. I asked the PTA for money to purchase the materials to be used in our space and spend it at our own Barnes &amp; Noble fundraiser, making our investment go that much further. It was around this time that the school voted to call our new space the Innovation Lab. I described the Innovation Lab to parents as an evolution. I grew up with a library, my children grew up with a media center, and now the children of Hall Creek will use the Innovation Lab. Our Innovation Lab is in what was our media center. Just outside of the lab is an area to sit and read, and what were once office spaces in the media center are now a planning room and a workroom with a green screen. The workroom has a sink and no carpet for the messier projects. It has a door to shut out nearby noise when using the green screen for video recording. Students return their books, they check them in and sort them. They're also responsible for self-checkout, and we've dedicated computers for the media center catalog as well. We added a new collaboration station. The existing collaboration area was rarely used, so to prime the pump with a new station allows students to simply use it for playing games. Now, they feel comfortable with it and use it to collaborate on projects with one another. The old table is currently being used as a 3D pen station, but still available as a collaboration station when needed. For example, the old area made a great viewing place for students that weren't allowed to go outside during the eclipse, so they were able to view a live streaming of the event there. There's a classroom near the interactive board and multiple work areas. There's also an open space so students are able to work on the floor. So this is a three-year-long project. Last year, we acquired the furniture. Now, we're continuing to acquire materials. We're reaching out to community members, asking that they add their expertise, starting with a landscaper that helped fifth graders measure for our soon-to-be-created steam garden. We've also invited a talented parent working to share his knowledge of jewelry making. I'd love to open a school store where students could sell their creations and have the proceeds go back into the I Lab. But our goal is to create more real-world opportunities. On the day after our UGA lost the championship, several students come in looking for UGA books.
Did you really have to bring that?
No. Some people have come with this. When I learned we didn't have any, I called Gretchen Thomas that I met at UGA and asked her to share our need with one of her students, thinking perhaps her students could write some books. Well, she said no, that I needed to have my students write the books. So now, we're collaborating by way of Google and something called Flipgrid. We're collaborating with her college students, and we're actually planning a field trip to Athens so my students can take pictures for their books. So other fifth graders are working on passion projects, and because we were able to tie in a lot of the science standards with these passion projects, my fifth graders are leading Science Night for our school on May 4th. I was able to take eight of our students to the Georgia Technology Conference this fall, and I was really excited to hear from the organizer of the event that she observed something she'd never seen happen before. All of the students involved gathered in front of our book booth, and they were teaching one another the different technologies that had been introduced. Teachers and administrators use the tools in the I Lab. Teachers and I gather once a month in the I Plan Room to plan collaborative lessons focused on science standards, including the STEM scopes and other science lab activities. I've also been able to highlight existing but little-used items such as the eBooks. The watchdog dads at our school are involved in the I Lab as well. The tools we use include glue guns with safety gloves, hammers, drills with, to be used with goggles, various craft items, trash, bottles, bottle caps, cardboard, corks, cups, lots and lots of paper tubes. We use magnet tiles, little bits, various apps on iPads, old tried-and-true favorites like Lincoln Logs and Tinker Toys. Students and teachers alike are learning to use the 3D printer and the cricket machine. The students of Hall Creek are likely to hold jobs that have yet to be created. Our plan is to give them a skill set that can be used in any career, the ability to create, collaborate, communicate, and think critically. The Innovation Lab gives our students and teachers a place to make that happen. So does it look like play? It should. More and more research is proving that there's value in play, and in our I Lab, students are allowed to explore their talents, interests, and passions. So we at Hall Creek would be happy to have you visit anytime. We have a dedication of the I Lab planned for this Friday, and health-willing First Lady Deal will be there. You can also email us with any questions and follow us on Instagram. That's our Instagram address.
Aren't you glad you said yes?
I am. Best job in the building.
Oh, I know. It's so wonderful. I can't believe that kids are that creative and just take control of what they're doing. How exciting. So you'll have to come back and share the Georgia parts with us.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
And I have to say, this isn't too far from reality. I mean, a lot of companies are now making these spaces in the break areas, and they get in together and collaborate and have hacks, they call them, but they do the same thing. They get together and it looks like play, and if you look at the old sense and the way we grew up at work, it looks like play, but it's not. They're out there working, and they're actually doing their job and going past their responsibilities and trying new things, which is key, so they're all growing.
And teaching one another.
And teaching one another. And so it's interesting to see the kids getting ready for it because it's already out there.
Probably learning from the failures as well.
Absolutely.
Exactly.
The FEL stands for First Attempt in Learning.
That's right. Thank you so much for sharing. That's exciting.
You can have that if you want.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Next, we have the Consent Agenda. Is there a motion to approve? Is it moved?
Second.
Alright, motion, I think it's a second from...
Darla.
Darla. All in favor? Yes? Before we do the public participation, if anybody would like to leave at this time, it would be a good time to go. Next, it's public participation. We had someone sign up. Is Mr. Hutchinson here to speak? No? Okay. Alright. Here's his presentation and discussion. We have the 2017 Audit Report with Rick Gunn.
As you all know, each year, we have to have an annual financial audit, as well as a federal compliance audit, also a SPOS review. We use a firm called Martin, named Martin Jenkins, who we've used for several years to do all of the services for us. Tonight, I have two gentlemen from the firm, Justin Davis and Tim Lyons, and they will come forward and present the 2017 Audit Report to you.
I get the pleasure of following the super-exciting kids' learning stuff with the audit.
You all have a big act to follow.
You all probably have a lot of documents, some of them electronically, some of them in hard copy. The one that I'm going to be speaking mostly from is the auditor's discussion analysis. It's my understanding that y'all have a hard copy of that in front of you. This is the document that we use. If you know, in your financial report, y'all have the management's discussion analysis. This is kind of our opportunity to give y'all a bit of a summary of what we did, and we did our audit, as well as to communicate to y'all some things that we have to, the standards say we have to communicate certain things to y'all in writing, and so we do that in this as well. And then also, just to point out a few things for going forward. So as I'm going through this, obviously, I have copies of the financial statements as well as the SPOS performance audit, so if y'all have any questions, feel free to stop me and let me know. Real quick, on page two, as Rick mentioned, we're both with Martin and Jenkins. My name is Tim Lyons. I'm a director with the firm in our department of practice. I served as the reviewer of this engagement. I work for Adam Fraley, who's the engagement partner, who's probably who y'all are used to seeing at these things. It's crazy now with all the June 30 year ends, how many board meetings we have, so he's actually at another meeting tonight presenting an audit. But I served as the reviewer, Justin served as the engagement in charge, kind of ran the day-to-day fieldwork of the audit, was out here working with Rick and his staff. So page four, kind of right there in the middle of the page, kind of the most important part of the audit, what was the opinion on the financial statements. We have a fancy word for it called unmodified. In layman's terms, it means clean opinion, so basically what that means is that the financial statements are considered to present fairly the results of operations and the financial position of the Board of Education as of June 30th, 2017. Pages five, really pages five through eight, we've got some information in there for y'all, some, you know, some light reading one evening when you're just dying to read about some. But we summarize some of the important financial information that are in the financial report. We also have a kind of a roadmap of the footnotes. If there's ever anything that you're thinking, "Hey, I wonder where this is discussed in our financial documents," we kind of lay out the footnotes so that if you have a question about where is the information on our long-term debt, or where do we have the information disclosed about the pension plans, we kind of summarize the footnotes there, and you can know that, okay, hey, the capital asset information is going to be in Note F, and that may be help you navigate the financial report. It seems like every year, these things get longer and longer with everything that the GASB is doing, so we try to summarize that for y'all so you have it if you need it. As Rick mentioned, we also issued two compliance reports on page 10 there. One of them is called the Yellow Book Report, and that's really just the report that we issue in accordance with government auditing standards. We're required to look at an entity's internal control while we're doing the audit, and the important takeaway from that report is that we did not have any findings, which means that there were no significant deficiencies or material weaknesses in internal control based on the areas that we felt like we needed to look at to form our opinion on the financial statements. We also issued our Single Audit Report, which is a report that Rick referenced that has to do with the federal awards. We are required every year to look at the school system's federal expenditures. Y'all produce a document that's called the CIFA, the Schedule of Expenditures of Federal Awards. We look at, we have to do some determination on which grants and programs we're going to audit. This year, we did the Special Education Cluster, and again, the important takeaway from there, no compliance findings, no internal control issues that came up as a result of the federal audit. Starting there on page 10 and going through, really through the top of page 13, those are what are called our required communications. We've given them to y'all in writing. I'm certainly not going to read all of them, but it's the important ones, you know, to point out would be that we're independent of the Board of Education. Obviously, that's a huge thing. We have to be independent of y'all. So we've got representations from management regarding some things that they gave to us during the audit. That's our standard stuff that we get from every one of our audit clients. We had no uncorrected misstatements. That's an important one to point out. That means that we didn't have any adjustments that we came across and we said, "Okay, we think that this number should be changed to this, but it's not material, so we're willing to pass and move on." We didn't have any of that. So all of the adjustments that we found have been posted and are reflected in the financial statements, so no uncorrected misstatements. And then lastly, the last big part of this document here are the future pronouncements, even lighter reading, things that GASB is doing and has done that will impact y'all's financial statements in the upcoming years. The two that we've been pointing out with all the boards of education that we work with, and they're things that y'all are aware of, this is not going to be a shock to anybody. The two big things is GASB 75, which has to do with other post-employment benefits, which will be coming this year. So at June 30, 2018, the Forsyth County Board of Ed, along with all the other school districts in the state, will be recording their share of the net liability of the State Health Benefit Fund, the same way that y'all did with your share of the net pension liability related to TRS a couple of years ago. So that'll be another big, ugly liability that goes on the statement in that position that's going to hit all the school districts, kind of the same way that the TRS thing did. So just to be aware of that that will be for this year's coming audit in June 30, 2018. And then obviously, kind of hand-in-hand with those two things, as y'all know, we've been just reminding folks from a planning and budgeting standpoint, obviously, TRS contribution percentages continue to go up. 14.27% last year, 16.8% this year, going to be 20.9% in 2019. And then along with the OPEB, the State Health Benefit Fund, I mean, for y'all, your post-employment benefit contributions went from 15 to 16, went up 7%, and then from 16 to 17, went up 11%. We kind of expect that trend to continue as far as the funding of those post-retirement obligations. I mean, that's kind of been the biggest thing that the GASB has been doing the last few years, and so it's kind of all hitting all the governments all at once. The other big thing that's in here, again, is just to kind of point out, there's some years down the road on this, so no changes for this in '18, but the GASB has passed a new standard on leases, and that standard brings into the government world the same guidance that's out there for all of the non-government entities that have to prepare financial statements to get out of it. All the leases that are out there now are going to come onto the balance sheet, so more assets and liabilities that'll be treated as assets and liabilities no longer, this concept of operating leases, this kind of like this year, one year at a time type thing that we do for certain leases, will kind of be going away, and everything will be coming onto the balance sheet. But like I said, we've got some time before that one. I think that one is not going to be until 2021. But just something to be aware of, we're trying to let everybody know now because as y'all are going about your business and doing what y'all need to do to run the Board of Ed, when y'all are getting into these leasing-type transactions, just things to be aware of that, hey, we're going to need to kind of get our hands around these and make sure we've got them recorded the right way in a couple of years. We do offer free client CPE. I know y'all are all aware of that, but we're going to be going over leases in depth a couple of times between now and when that standard has to be implemented.
What was the reason behind adding that in? Do you know?
From the GASB's standpoint, I think it's, if you look over the last probably 10 or so years, a lot of the standards the GASB's been adopting sort of mirror what's going on in the FASB world, which is everybody that's not a government, they have to follow FASB. So if you look at what GASB's done with investments... So if you look at what GASB's done with investments, with the way that we report bond transactions, with the way that we deal with pension accounting, a lot of that is stuff that the FASB did, that the GASB kind of comes around afterwards and says, yeah, this is probably a good idea. We should do this, too. So it's that kind of, it's that kind of thought process.
Two schools are getting in more lease arrangements rather than buying the assets, so they're trying to reflect that.
Yeah, and I mean, and I would agree wholeheartedly, and a lot of that isn't even just specific to school districts. I mean, governments as a whole, you know, they, you know, a lot of times, they can try to pitch you on this idea that it's a lease, and it's, oh, it's not a long-term liability, but it really is a long-term liability, and just doesn't have, it has a funny, non-long-term liability-ish name, but it really is. I think that's really what they were trying to get at, is what's really going on with the substance of these transactions, more so than what we're calling them.
Right.
So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, if y'all have any. And, you know, obviously, y'all know how to get, get ahold of us if anything comes up later, as y'all are reviewing all this information, feel free to reach out and let us know.
You're quite prepared to have. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Y'all have a good rest of the evening.
Does Rick Gunn need to take a bow?
No, Tim. Where is Tim? All right. And next, financial reports.
Before I start that, I'd like to say, they're a great firm to work with. We've worked with them for several years. I can basically shoot an email and say, hey, I got a question about something, and again, I ask her really fast. So if you ask the questions upfront, when they come to do the audit, you get in less trouble. Also, I'd like to thank my staff. They're the ones that put in the hard work, making sure everything's done the proper way, doing all the financial statements, and thanks to them, we have, you know, have a clean audit.
Very clean.
Very important.
It's important.
Tonight, I'm going to go over the January of 2018 financial statements. The first statement we have is cash receipts and disbursements. Beginning of the month, we had a little over 145 million receipts, 21.5 million, and disbursements of 35.5 million, leaving the balance of a little over 131 million. So you can see, we're spending about 14 million a month now, more than we are bringing in, which is typical for this time of year, since we've collected all of the majority of our tax money in October, November, and December. The revenue, excuse me, year-to-date, as you can see, at the loan taxes, we're at 97.37%. We should collect all of that this year. Total, we're at 74% for the year. Things are tracking just like they should be. Year-to-date budget report, this shows revenues and expenditures. If you look down at the bottom, you see expenditure is a 58.45% for the month, excuse me, for the year. We should be at 58.33, so we're tracking right where we should be. Instruction being our largest area, you can see that it's 58.2. Debt service cash analysis for the month, we had in February, all of our payments come due, we had to make them the last day of January, so the funds are there. If you look at the debt services column, you can see we made expenditures of almost $38 million, and we have a transfer in for our SPOS coming over from our SPOS 5 account that you can see. And the total funds left at the end of the month are 54.8 million available for debt services. The investment summary for the month, if you'll notice, we have a column there that says Fund 100, General Fund, Treasuries, and Money Market. We took some of our funds, $30,150,000 that we had in our checking account, and purchased some treasury notes with them, trying to get, short-term treasury notes, five to six months long. They'll, they'll mature before we actually need the funds, you know, in July, August, and September. So we'll have that money, we'll be making a little bit more money than we were making before. But you can see the activity in all of the SPOS accounts. There's only a certain amount of, there's only certain things that we're able to actually invest in. No hedge funds, no derivatives, anything like that. T-bills and LGIP accounts are pretty much all we can put it in. This is a SPOS report. We collected $3,742,000.
It's a record.
It's a record. $520,000 more than last month, and we're at 6% change from the previous year overall. We're averaging about 3.25 million a month now.
I don't think I'd ever see where we were over consistently over $3 million.
Never have seen it.
It's a good Christmas, then.
Yeah, yeah. I believe last year, it was 3.0, I've got it there, 3.5 million, excuse me. Over on the right side. Yeah, sorry. All the schools reported for the month. Ending cash balance for elementaries was about 4.3 million. Middle schools, 1.9 million. High schools, 3.5 million. And the total amount in the schools is 9.7 million, and you can see the chart showing this split out there. So, any questions on financials or audit?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, next, we have a report on digital citizenship with Jason Neal and Kristen Duschel. And where is your dog? Was he? Does he come to you here?
He doesn't, but he might.
Well, good evening. Thank you for allowing us to share our work around digital citizenship with you tonight. So the last year, we've taken the opportunity to review what our schools are currently doing around digital citizenship, as well as look at best practices around the state and around the country. We believe that as a leading district in technology, that we should be doing as much as we can to prepare our students for the world they're going to live in after school. So the last several years, as you know, technology's become so ubiquitous in our lives, that's becoming more and more so. Devices are in the hands of children of all ages, in the environment that our youngest students are growing up in, dramatically different than what students experienced 10 years ago, or even five years ago. So we think it's apparent that we need to be proactive and help students just as much as we can in this area, understand the role that technology should play in their lives. As a parent of a kindergartner myself, I can only imagine what he's going to be doing 10 years from now, and what the classroom and what his daily life will look like then. So, the board policy that guides our work around this, around educating mothers about online behavior, was actually passed in 2009. At that time, we established kind of our procedure of asking schools every year to complete a internet safety plan. That has a very narrow focus of internet safety and online privacy, and both of those things are very vital for our students to understand and to be aware of. But we also believe that it ignores other critical areas that our students also need to be aware of, and that we need to prepare them for. So what we're looking to do is to move to a digital citizenship plan beginning next school year. It's going to be a broader coverage of topics that Kristen's going to share with you in a moment. Kristen's done a great job of putting this together and putting in a lot of work and a lot of time, reviewing, going, working with other districts, taking a look at what's being done around the nation. And also, this work was kind of jump-started with our district transition team, when they identified this as a high-need area, when they were looking at the transition between elementary and middle, and middle and high school. So some of the goals we hope to achieve as a part of this new plan is we want to help students and parents, obviously, understand how to balance life, school, and technology. I feel like as educators and parents, we also need to be able to model that and be able to understand what that is as well. We also believe that the new plan that we've put together, we're better aligned with our profile, particularly in the areas of exhibiting strong personal qualities, engaging and contributing, and interacting effectively. Ultimately, we want to prepare our students for college or career, or whatever comes next, after they leave us, after they leave Forsyth County Schools. So again, we worked with our schools to understand what they're currently doing. We also worked with them to understand what was doable, given the amount of time they have to dedicate to this. And one thing I think you'll see when Kristen gets in the details of the plan, is the true focus that this has at the early elementary level. We believe that in the past, where grades six through eight were kind of the time that a student's digital habits were formed, now that's being formed earlier and earlier, as early as grade two, three, and four. So a lot of our work really focuses on that area. So Kristen's going to come up and share the work she's done, and we look forward to sharing that with you.
Thank you so much for having me. I'm so excited to share with you this plan. I took a long time to research. What are other counties doing? What are other states doing with digital citizenship? And what are the best programs out there? And I kind of narrowed my focus to Common Sense Media. They had a great comprehensive program, but it was just too much. And so I looked at that, and I looked at other counties, and we whittled it down to be these five domains that we would concentrate on in our schools each and every year. So kindergarten will concentrate on two of these, and I'll get to that, first grade to two of these, and then throughout the rest of their years, they will all have lessons, students will all have lessons throughout the grade levels on all five of these standards. So we did cyberbullying and self-image, digital footprint and responsibility, online safety and privacy, and then my loves, as a media specialist, creative credit and copyright and information literacy. And so what we're hoping schools will do will be to create a new digital citizenship action plan. They need to come up with a school vision, their team roles and responsibilities, a timeline that they're going to flow this out to their students and to their teachers, resources, and how they're going to get their parents engaged. And the beauty of the program is, they don't have to create this themselves. I've created it for them, so that they can go in and see an example of a digital citizenship action plan for elementary school and model theirs after that. I've created one for middle and one for high. I've created the lessons. If they would just like to go in and use the lessons that I have created, they are welcome to do so, but I wanted schools to be free to do the things that they've already been doing. I didn't want this to seem overwhelming, because there are so many schools are doing wonderful things for digital citizenship, and I wanted them to be able to use that and not have to reinvent the wheel. So I tried to make a balance of both. Here are some wonderful tools for you, but if you're doing something great, you may go ahead and use that at your school. So again, existing resources or the ones that I've provided. Okay, so the time commitment, we tried to keep it fairly simple as far as what's required, but schools may do more than this. So K through 1 will have two lessons per year, second through 8 will have five, and then high school's a little bit different. They, instead of having actual lessons, they are going to have videos played on the morning announcements, they are going to have posters up in the schools, and they'll also have some tech talks during lunchtime and other times when they have some downtime, and we can have some guest speakers come in. So it's a little bit different. And I found it kind of funny that my high school media specialist really wanted posters. They thought that would be the greatest way to catch high schoolers. And the middle school teacher in me was like, yeah, right, posters. And when we asked our high school students what they thought would catch their eye the most, they said posters. So we're doing the right thing, and so I was very excited about that, and hopefully that this will, they'll see these, and it'll make a difference to them. And then another big thing that I'm working on are family tech talk nights, that each school or each cluster would have a family tech talk night. Right now, I'm working with Chris Castle, the media specialist at North Middle, and we are designing a family tech talk night with rotating stations for parents. We are sending out a survey to the parents to see what they are most interested in, and then we will be providing activities and lessons for them based on that. And we have just had some wonderful responses. Parents just don't know where to start with all of this technology that is out there. They have so many questions, and they were so thankful. I went and spoke to a group of parents at South Middle. They had a parent night, and they were just clamoring for more information. How do I do this with my kids? How do I make sure they're going on correct websites? How do I control the difference between being online for homework and being online for fun? And so they're clamoring for these ideas, and as a school system, I think it's so exciting that we'll be able to provide these for them. Each one of the lessons that I created has some type of parent information that goes with it that can be sent out to parents after the lesson is taught. So just a quick overview of the scope and sequence that I created. Yes, we want to open it. Okay, so this is the overall scope and sequence. It contains, all of these are clickable links, and they all have the lessons linked right to them. So this, anybody could get on this and see how the lessons flow, how safety flows from going places safety, you know, all the way down through social media safety, which is so huge in our middle school and high schools. So that is a great overview for them to see. We also have a middle school example. It's not so overwhelming when you just look at your grade level. Oh, yes.
The way you did this really made you draw, and it makes, like, I want to go through each lesson and see what it has to say. It was, the world is clickable links, and he goes right in. It's very helpful.
Thank you. I tried to make it so that they were easily progressive, and that each lesson looked exactly the same, so it wouldn't be confusing as you went through. Well, that is not opening, so I think it may be. Okay. Escape. Okay. Wow, hello, there it is, 20 million times. Just wanted to make sure you'd be able to see that. So this is an example of middle school, a little more easy to look at and see how your kiddos are going to progress. You click on a link, and you will get the lesson. In elementary school, schools can decide how they want to have these lessons given to students. They can be given to students by the media specialist during specialist classes. They could have elementary school teachers teaching them in their own classrooms. In middle school, I suggested that they teach them during their literacy times, and that the media specialist meets with every grade level down here to teach them about creative credit and copyright and information literacy, one of each lesson throughout the year. And then, of course, the high school is a little bit different. It would be posters and videos, and hopefully some great guest speakers. Okay. So now we'll go back. Nope. Let's see. Okay. We'll just quickly run through this. Okay. And so what I also did is I created infographics to show that everybody in a school should be responsible for teaching digital citizenship, not just the media specialists, not just teachers. And so I created an infographic for each grade level, and it shows the responsibilities for each. As you can see, teachers, counselors, and included school resource officers. And as they click on these buttons, it gives them information that can help them in the teaching of these, or how can they participate in digital citizenship at their school. So these are all linkable as well.
I'm just thinking, it's one more thing for them to do, but it really is what the glue is for everything we do, is built around technology. So this is so logical to do this.
Thank you. I tried to make it so that it wasn't just one more thing to do, because it is. But I tried to make it so that it was very user-friendly, and so that they didn't feel like they had to reinvent the wheel. They were doing something great, so they could already do that. And we got some excellent feedback from our ITS and media specialist, teacher advisory, student advisory had some great ideas, counselors, as I said, the parents, and then we also met with the principals, and I took all of their ideas and tweaked this. This is an ongoing program. I will change it, I will make it better as I receive feedback. So it's not set in stone. I want it to be a working program.
Oh, it's just great.
Thank you. Okay.
I hope that every LSC would have you come talk, or all the principals, let them know what's going on. This is just really, just like you always do, everything that you ever do is just wonderful, but this is great.
Thank you very much. I'm very pleased to have created this, and just can't wait to see how the kids react to it, and parents and teachers.
How long did you work on this project?
I didn't get much sleep for the first few months of my, my job, but for several months, I worked.
That's a great product.
Thank you.
You started out with the board policy. Do you see yourself going back and changing that policy then, and procedures or whatever, too?
That is definitely a possibility, as we look at things, yes.
That could incorporate what you're doing. Right, yeah. 2009, it was a long time ago.
Yeah, it is.
And you may want to look at some businesses, too, and understand how their digital citizenship is starting to change, because I know I just came from a company who was using my network to get their message out. So they came to us as an employer, asking us to use our social network to market, and so that's a new world of, you know, what's good, what's right, do you feel good about doing that? There's a lot of opportunities in business for marketing now.
Yes.
And they're using these tools to do that, and starting to recognize and understand that, so maybe bring some of these business partners in that can talk to these things and understand how it's changing.
That's a great idea. I did list business partners on the family tech night to have some of your business partners come in and tell us how they're...
Show the reality.
Yeah, it is the reality. Yeah, it is the reality. Yes.
Tom will be glad to speak, won't you?
For sure.
Well, they know a lot about it.
Do you really?
They know a lot about it.
Well, we do that at the high school level, when they have the kids do the ethics in the business, and they present a scenario, what would you do in this situation? And they talk it through, and the team comes back with their suggestion. It's really interesting.
Thank you, Kristen. That was great.
Thank you.
Great job, thanks.
Next, we have our action items, adoption of employee work calendars for 2018 to 2019. Dr. Salome.
Good afternoon. You have before you the employee summary calendar for 2018-19. There are eight calendars altogether. There are a hundred and eighty-day, a hundred and eighty-three-day, a hundred and ninety-day, two hundred, two-ten, two-twenty, and two-forty. And they are based on the school calendar that you've already approved. Really, it's the same format as last year, just a little bit different on the actual dates. So we'd like to present this for you for approval.
Recommend approval of the 2018-19 employee work calendars.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion of Tom, second. And Kristen, any discussion?
Is there anyone to move?
All in favor? Unanimous, thank you. Next on the agenda is a school board member code of ethics. Each year, we review, I'll go back. It won't. There we go. The code of ethics is something that we adopted years ago, but it is good to review it every year and to reaffirm our compliance with these ethics. They were developed after many years of boards across the state were not being compliant or doing things in ethical ways. So the state board provided a guideline for all boards for ethics that we should follow. And I'm going to read some of these, if you'll just bear with me. The South County Board of Education desires to operate in the most ethical and conscientious manner possible, and to that end, the board adopts this code of ethics, and each member of the board agrees that he or she will. The first domain is government structure. Recognize that the authority of the board rests only with the board as a whole and not with individual board members, and act accordingly. Two, support the delegation of authority for the day-to-day administration of the school system to the local superintendent, and act accordingly. Three, honor the chain of command and refer problems or complaints consistent with the chain of command. Board recognizes that the local superintendent should serve as secretary, ex officio to the board, and should be present at all meetings of the board, except when his or her contract, salary, or performance is under consideration. Five, not undermine the authority of the local superintendent or intrude into responsibilities that properly belong to the local superintendent or school administration, including such functions as hiring, transferring, or dismissing employees. Six, use reasonable efforts to keep the local superintendent informed of concerns or specific recommendations that any member of the board may bring to the board. The second domain involves strategic planning. The first is reflect through actions that his or her first and foremost concern is for the educational welfare of children attending school within the school system. Second, participate in all planning activities to develop the vision and goals of the board in the school system. Three, work with the board and the local superintendent to ensure prudent and accountable use of the resources of the school system. Fourth, render all decisions based on available facts and his or her independent judgment, and refuse to surrender his or her judgment to individuals or specific interest groups. Five, uphold and enforce all applicable laws, all rules and regulations of the State Board of Education and the board and all court orders pertaining to the school system. The third domain is the board and the community relations. First, we seek regular and systemic communications among the board and the students, staff, and community. Two, communicate to the board and the local superintendent expressions of public reactions to board policies and school programs. The fourth domain involves policy development. Work with other board members to establish effective policies for the school system. Two, make decisions on policy matters only after all discussion at publicly held board meetings. Three, periodically review and evaluate the effectiveness of policies or school system programs and performances. And the last domain is, I hope it is, no, it's not. The fifth is board meetings. Attend and participate in regularly scheduled and call board meetings. Be informed and prepared to discuss items considered on the board agenda. Work with other board members in the spirit of harmony and cooperation in spite of differences of opinion that may arise during the discussion or resolution of issues at board meetings. Vote for a closed executive session of the board only when applicable law or board policies require consideration of matter in executive session. Maintain the confidentiality of all discussion and other matters pertaining to the board and the school system during executive session of the board. Make decisions in accordance with the interests of the school system as a whole and not any particular segment thereof. A local board of educators shall not adopt or follow any code of ethics which prevent the members of such board from discussing freely the policies and actions of such board outside of the board meeting. This shall not apply to any matters or matters of discussed in executive session or which are exempt from disclosure under Code Section 501872.8. Abide by all decisions of the board. Personnel is consider the employment of personnel over receiving, considering the recommendations of the school superintendent. Support the employment of persons best qualified to serve as employees of school system and assist on regular impartial evaluations of school system staff. Comply with all applicable, I hate that word, laws, rules, regulations, and all board policies regarding employment of family members. And the next is financial governance, and this goes on and on, and I could read forever. But I just wanted to let you know that we take these seriously, and being a board member is, is serious work, and it requires cooperation, and we all respect each other, and we, we do abide by these ethics, and we felt like it was necessary for the public to know that, what they entail. And this is all by state law that we have to do this. So it's an honor to be on the board, but we do have ethics that we do believe and abide by them. At this time, I'd entertain a motion that we support and do adhere to the board ethics.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Nancy, and a second by Tom. All in favor? Unanimous, thank you. All right, Dr. Bearden, any points of affirmation?
I don't have anything tonight.
Would you want to make it say?
No, what you said at the beginning is exactly what I was going to say, so it's perfect.
All right, at this time, we'll go on executive session for personnel, student issue, and out of district request.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Tom, a second by Nancy. All in favor?